Yeah, I'm good.
No, this, we got very straightforward stuff tonight here.
Looked like it.
Yeah, it does look like it.
We got like turned into winter time, didn't it?
It did. Well, I'd been cold all day long.
I don't think that's why. Only this room has felt heat all day long. It feels kind of chilly out here. Stephanie made me start her fire before I left.
You know what, I don't have one.
Saw y'all walking down the street.
Wood burning, well, I've got fireplaces, but I don't have. I got some gas logs, I turned them on today. And we stood there in the living room. We had a.
I'm a little late today. I'm a little disorganized, it's back, I got here at eight o'clock this morning.
You made me think I was late to work.
He has.
Yeah, I got here at five.
He had shorts on, the short, big shirt.
Freaked her out.
You did, I was like, is it eight thirty? I was like, what is happening?
When you get older, yeah, when you get older, you gonna get colder.
Oh, you have to be, or you're gonna be. I'll send, let me shoot Michael a text. You're gonna be on there, I promise. Let me see here.
Well, that's five thirty. Let's call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. October the eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. A roll call, everyone is present, and we will welcome Shawna Mathias, who is our newest member. Let the. You know, all, all members are present. At this time, we would ask for the approval of the agenda, a motion to approve the agenda. Moved.
Second.
Move in a second, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? The agenda is approved. Oh, okay, thank you. Minutes from the previous meeting, which was September the twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Has everybody had a chance to look over the minutes of the previous meeting? Entertain a motion to approve. Are there any deletions, additions, or move we approve, corrections?
Second.
Motion to approve, and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Report from Mr. Code Officer?
Nothing to report to the Planning Commission evening, other than welcoming, welcoming Shawna to the Planning Commission. We're now back to a full force.
Very good.
Pointees.
Thank you. Old business, any old business to come before the commission? New business, under new business, the item number one is a request for a conditional use, use permit at five seventeen Hill Street for a childcare center. Mr. Code Office?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property, this is five seventeen Hill Street, you can see in there a big aerial photograph here on the screen. This is an existing daycare center building, its own professional, been there since nineteen seventy-seven. Developed as a daycare center back then, was operated a short time recently as an adult care center, and then the owner ceased operations in twenty nineteen. Building op, floor area is twenty-five hundred square feet, and it's got existing parking of thirteen spaces, they have two entrances off Hill Street. The employees for the proposed conditional use in front of the Planning Commission includes two to ten employees on their staff, their hours of operation will be six AM to seven PM daily, and they're proposing to have anywhere from between seventy and eighty children under their care. Just briefly, the history of this property, that, you know, it, it was used as a daycare, daycare center for a number of years, its own professionally, but the ceasing of operations of that use in twenty nineteen has caused the, the previous non-conforming continuation of the property, the grandfathering, if you will, to, that, that expired after a period of six months, according to your zoning ordinance, so the reason for this request is to basically renew that conditional use of this property for that purpose. Staff has reviewed their request and has made a recommendation of approval as submitted without conditions.
Thank you. Is there anyone present to speak for this request? Good evening, would you just give us your name and?
I'm Levon Howard, my address is one twenty Arthur's Lane, Covington, Georgia. I'm looking to open the center, reopen the center as Exploring New Adventures Learning Academy to serve students in the community, to educate and nurture students. That's the plan.
And I am part of her team, my name is Sharon McDonald. I live in Ellenwood, Georgia, sixty Key Road, Ellenwood, Georgia. Like I say, I'm just here for support for her. And from understanding, we agree with everything that Mr., the Code Officer said. But there is no daycare in that area, and I think will be very beneficial to the community, and we, and the community can be beneficial to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Do you have a staff already in place to?
No, not at this time, we don't.
When, when do you propose to open?
The plan is for January, because we have to get it state approved before opening.
Other questions?
She, she needs to step up to the podium.
Sorry?
She needs to step up to the podium, please.
Yes, please, thank you.
Yes, my name is Virginia Crawford, and I live on Roosevelt Street, the same street that intersect with Hill Street. And down the street from that, just past that intersection, and what my concern were, or is, or our concern in the communities, with, with traffic, would there be a problem there with our traffic in that area? And what does conditional mean?
I'm, I'm happy to answer that question.
Yes, please.
The conditional part of this use, the reason, like, the reason they're here before, the Planning Commission this evening, a conditional use is not one that's allowed by right. So there's two types of land uses in a zoning district, conditional or allowed by right. If it were allowed by right, there wouldn't be a public hearing, they would be able to just operate. But because of certain types of land uses, like a daycare center, a church, or other things like that, that aren't, I guess, typical land uses within certain districts, they require an elevated level of approval by the city. In this case, a daycare center in the middle of a neighborhood on a property's own professional is a conditional use. In fact, they're conditional uses throughout the city, so really, anyone that opens a daycare in the City of Monroe has to come in front of the Planning Commission and City Council for a conditional use approval. If it's Zone B three, like if this were on Broad Street, you wouldn't see a request like this, so. But you had another concern, I think, for the Planning Commission?
Actually, traffic, congestions, and that sort of thing. And I do know, and I've been there since seventy-seven, when the daycare was there, but there have, the traffic and the way the street is, is laid out, houses are, are positioned, like, just before you get to Hill Street, there's a deep curve, and, and on that street, Roosevelt Street is not that long, there are two speed bumps. So we have, and, and in that curve, the, there's a house that, there's a couple houses right there. No parking space, so if something happens, if any activity is going on in those homes, there's, there's parking on the street, and the curve is very sharp, so you got a one-way entrance, or exit, however, in that little space, and there's a blind spot that I'm, I'm kind of pleasantly surprised that somebody hadn't had a, a head-on collision in that area. So my concern is the increase of traffic flow in that, in our area.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, let's ask questions from the commission.
On the Hill Street entrance, are there, are there two curb cuts? So I'm trying to envision what pickup and drop-off would look like to the facility, or, or do you, is it a captured parking lot, if that's the correct term?
There is an entrance, it's two parts, it's an entrance, and then you can come around and go out on the other side.
Okay.
Yeah.
Couldn't tell from the trees there, looked like it was, okay. So it would, it would flow through in that direction, out, and there would be an entrance and an exit?
Right.
Okay.
She, no, I'm sorry, that probably is not gonna make it to the record. What, yeah, please, please, please come back up.
There is parking there on the property, I think it's about. Yes, both sides, it's probably about, what, ten parking spaces, so it's nobody's gonna be parking on the street or anything.
I think there's thirteen.
There's thirteen spaces.
I think there's thirteen on your side.
Okay, I, I'm sorry.
I see now there's two entrances, so.
Yeah, the other one's hiding behind that, the shadow of that tree.
How many children do you anticipate starting with, and then how long do you think it'll take you to get up to eighty?
We anticipate starting about maybe twenty, and then we'll grow from there.
Does the state determine what is a safe capacity for the number of students?
Yes.
And has that already been assessed?
No, we have to get approval from the zoning and send every, all the paperwork in first. And then they'll come out and assess and look at the building and the rooms, and then we'll go from there.
Seems like the concern was traffic, but it, it looks like to me you've got a flow-through, drop-off and pickup that shouldn't be too bad, except for the peak, peak times of day.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I sort of got ahead of myself, is there anyone else to speak in opposition for, for this request? If none, I will intate a motion to approve or. A move we approve. Motion to approve?
I'll second.
And a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is passed. Item number two is a request for a rezone at eleven oh-one Double Springs Church Road Connector from B three to PCD, that's a planned commercial district. Code Officer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a planned commercial district rezone request from B three. This is the, proposed to be the YMCA project, it's technically a community recreation center by land use definitions. They are proposing to develop their site for their YMCA, and they've included substantial details in their application, including a pattern book that outlines the full details of the development of the site, and I'm just gonna try to hit some highlights of that submittal. So they're proposing to access the site from the Double Springs Church Road Connector with one entrance into the site, into their parking and access drive areas. They're proposing to have a building basically centrally located on the property, and then you can see there's the various ball fields, your various soccer fields, indoor lacrosse pavilion, and other ancillary uses on the site, including an archery range on the property. I've outlined the specific details in the staff report, I don't want to spend too much time reading all those individual statistics, but just to hit some of those highlights. So the, the proposed primary building is forty-four thousand three hundred seventy-five square feet. They are proposing in their planned district to be, to have a maximum building height of thirty-five feet. The building facade, the main building that's proposed, has a combination of brick and gray and dark, or, excuse me, dark gray and black architectural metals. Total parking on the site, including the archery range, is two hundred eighty-eight parking spaces. And as I was describing on that plan, they have, you know, various ancillary buildings that would be associated with those outdoor uses, we're talking about a fieldhouse here in the center. And then you've got some future other buildings proposed in the future, or future footprints of them that are shown in this plan. They aren't proposed to be developed at this time, but they would be allowed to do so at some point in the future, after they've, after they've been rezoned and developed. Believe I've hit most of the highlights, and I will allow the applicant to, to detail you further, but just a snapshot of their proposed architecture, what that brick and architectural metal would look like. They've provided, provided substantial details of their proposed building and their representative architecture in their application. It's an attractive-looking building, very modern, and they're trying to emulate the Walton Mill look. So we, we've taken a look at the request and made a recommendation of four conditions. I can read those, or we could just let those stand as presented, but the first one was the only land use permitted on the site will be the community recreation center and its accessory and ancillary uses. We're recommending the facilities constructed on the site be constructed as described in the request, and all future expansions of facilities shall also be constructed in like form. We're also suggesting that a centered left-turn lane be constructed on Double Springs Church Road for northbound left-turn movements into the site, and all lighting on the site should be downward-facing, I didn't mention this when I described their fields, but their, their ball fields will be illuminated, and so we're recommending that those be downward-facing and shielded to prevent glare and off-site trespass. That's all that I have, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you, it looks, looks really good. I would ask at this time if there was anybody, one present to speak in for this request?
Good evening.
Good evening.
There we go, all right. Well, good evening, I'm Andrea Gray, and this evening I have the pleasure of representing the YMCA of Walton, or of Georgia's Piedmont District. I'm joined here today by Angie Putnam, who is the CEO of the Georgia Piedmont District, and a number of the members of the Walton County YMCA Committee effort. And so I'd like to run through a presentation to give you an overview of our application, and then collectively, we can answer any questions that you may have about the development. Again, we're asking to rezone thirty-eight point one nine acres off of Charlotte Rowe Boulevard and Drake Drive from the current B three designation to a planned commercial development to allow for this recreational facility. And as you know, it's located just south of the Monroe Area High School, just north of the Monroe Pavilion Development, and very centrally located within our county, off of our three major state highways. This is the existing zoning, and you can see that the property is surrounded by other B three R one uses. So it is a good fit with the, the PCD zoning. The Monroe Pavilion is also a PCD zoning, so we're consistent with the, the trend of development in this area, and I think this facility would be a great fit there. On the site plan, as Brad went over, we've got a number of primary uses allotted on the development plan, which was in more, more visible, I guess, in your application than maybe on the screen. But the, the main elements include soccer fields, box lacrosse pavilion, archery range, tennis, pickleball courts, playground, fieldhouse, a walking trail, a future outdoor pool, and most importantly, the main activity building. Again, the structure is proposed, there's four, the main activity building is about forty-four thousand square feet. Box lacrosse is an open-air pavilion, that might be kind of a new term to you, but this is a kind of a trending new sport in our area. The archery pavilion will be designed and funded by the Georgia Department of Natural Resources as a project that they're sponsoring, be about twelve hundred square feet. And then there'll be a future fieldhouse to support the, the outdoor recreation equipment uses. And here's some representative renderings of the interior of the main facility building. You'll see the, the kind of hallway entry area, the two-story gym for basketball, and the indoor walking path, and then, of course, the competitive swimming pool, which we all might be the most excited about. Here's the footprint of that main facility building, and you can see, you know, there's, you know, eight, sixteen different uses shown, and again, the highlights are the, the competitive swimming pool, the basketball court, there's going to be a, a, a therapy, warm water therapy pool, various locker rooms, nursery, athletic training fitness center, and other rooms that can be used for community uses. The site plan will comply with all state and local required buffers. The end result of that is that there's a seventy-five-foot undisturbed buffer between the property line and where the development will start, and that will be heavily wooded. So any adjacent properties will be well-protected, and the stream that runs along the northwest and south side of the property will also be very well-protected. The setbacks on the plan are, are large, the setback from Charlotte Rowe is about two hundred eighty-five feet, and the setback from Drake Drive is three hundred and twenty-three feet. This is a deviation from the overlay that applies to this project, and this is why we were here before you tonight, because the planned commercial district allows us to build these additional setbacks versus the seventy-five-foot maximum required under the overlay district. And I will get, I'll get a little more into that later in my presentation, but this is a visual of the actual setbacks we're requesting. The lot coverage, you know, very low density on this lot, eighty-two percent is pervious surface, and only eighteen percent impervious, with buildings only representing about five percent of that. The design, as Brad mentioned, the, the design is based off of inspiration from the Monroe Mills, and that's with, you know, brick, metal accents, large rectangular windows, flat roofs. You can see, you know, the Monroe Mill pictures here to the, to the bottom of the screen, and, and our design to the top, how we're echoing those, you know, historic designs within the main building facility. And here again are just the materials that we're proposing to use, the brick, the architectural form metal wall panels, which is a significant upgrade, it's not your typical, you know, metal storage building at all. This is a very nice sturdy material with the beautiful black metal-framed windows and some awning features to go with that. The elevations, you can see all sides of the building there, it's got a lot of good visual interest, it's very attractive, different heights, different variations in the materials, really makes for a very attractive building. Not your typical YMCA, I will say. The lighting, as Brad mentioned, we're happy to comply with downward-facing lighting. These are the proposed lights for the parking and the ground area, and again, those will comply with all ordinance requirements, being only twenty feet high, and then also the maximum intensities will comply with your ordinance on that as well. The lighting on the fields will also be shielded and downward-facing. We will have nighttime activities, but we don't want our neighbors to, to feel the effects of that, so we're happy to comply with that condition on the sporting fields for the outdoor lighting. Signage, again, we're complying with all the ordinance requirements, we anticipate a sign, a sign on the building, and then also a ground sign at the entrance area. Fencing, again, complying and exceeding the ordinance on the playground, we'll have the pre-finished ornamental steel fencing, and then the black-coated chain-link fencing on the tennis/pickleball courts, and then on the detention pond areas. Utilities, we're wanting to work with the City of Monroe to use all of their available utilities, and we'll be working with them in a development agreement to ensure that occurs. Landscaping plan, we included a very thorough landscaping plan in the application as required. The main landscaping is within the parking lot areas where crepe myrtles will be planted for shade and visual interest, and then a twenty-five-foot buffer along the roads, which will primarily include oaks, holly, and elm trees. At all times, the YMCA of Georgia's Piedmont intends to own and operate the site, so this will not be a, a third party. This will be directly owned and managed by the YMCA. And no, and the interior roads will not be dedicated to the city, those will be maintained within the site. I mentioned before about the setback and the parking, and again, this is the reason we're here asking for the PCD zoning instead of the existing zoning. The overlay district, again, limits the setback to seventy-five feet, and also prefers that the parking be behind buildings. And really, that just does not work for what we're doing here. You know, here, we're, we're focused on families, we're focused on recreation, and for the design of the site, it makes more sense for safety and, and just general usability for the fields to be behind the building and behind the parking, so that children are not playing close to the streets, balls are not going out into the streets. It makes the most sense for safety for the parking lot, for cars to be separated from the fields by the building, so that rogue balls are not hitting, you know, cars of the visitors that are attending events at the facility. And also, just the site variation and grade was, was difficult to work with. And so that is our, our main, you know, the main reason that we are filing for the PCD is to allow our site design to accommodate the, the use for which it's intended. And again, the benefits to allowing this PCD are many to both the community and to the developer, and that includes, you know, maximizing the athletic space, and, you know, protecting the children that are out there playing on the fields, and protecting the cars of the people, you know, that are visiting the facility. And so overall, you know, I think, I think this is an amazing benefit to our community, and allowing the site plan specifics will result in the best product for, for everyone. So again, our request is to rezone the property from B three to PCD to accommodate our YMCA recreational facility. We did become aware of the staff recommended conditions, and these are just abbreviated summaries of what those are. But again, we have no issue with, you know, designating this use specifically for a community recreation center, that is our intention, and we are fine with that condition. We are absolutely fine committing to the materials that we show, that we show in the pattern book. That is our design, and that is our desire to continue with what we've shown in there with the metal and the brick. And number four, we're fine with the downward-facing and shielded lighting. But on number three, we'd like the opportunity to have some more conversations with the city regarding the left-turn lane, and that is because that could be a very expensive endeavor, and it could be something beneficial to not just the YMCA, but also to the city. This was kind of a, a new request that came at us in the last day, and so we would ask that that not be made a condition of this zoning, and to allow us to coordinate with the city on that. So with that, we would be happy to answer any questions that you may have about our proposed plan, or the facility, or, or anything you may have.
Have there been any traffic studies done or conducted?
I do not believe we've done a traffic study, no.
That Double Springs Road right there is, that, that's a, a two, two-lane road?
Right, the Double Springs Church Road Connector, I guess.
Connector, sorry, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
So how would a turn lane be incorporated? Do they have to expand the, the road width at that point?
Well, that's the challenge, right, and that's what we want to explore with the city, is what we need to widen the Double Springs Church Road Connector to be able to accommodate that center turn lane, which, I mean, at this moment, we don't know and haven't explored because this is new.
Right, if I could add to that, too, I mean, the recommended condition is based upon, just in a really high overview analysis of the request, is to require that a general look at the right-of-way, I don't think there's any need for like right-of-way acquisition from adjoining property owners to make a left turn happen, but there should be adequate room on the road to accommodate one, if so, one or so built. Because they are proposing some entrance improvements, those improvements could be reassessed, and I don't have those in my mind, and we didn't work one out. We also didn't require the applicant to prepare a traffic study. There could have been other improvements identified if a traffic study were done, but we're not, this is, this does not warrant one. There aren't enough trips that this site would generate to require them to do a traffic study, just in a general overview of how much impact it would have. I think, my recommendation of this, the turn lane was simply to accommodate left-turn movements into the site, because clearly if there's peak traffic flow from coming from the school, and there's movement into the site, there will be a there will be a stacking issue that backs up into Charlotte Rowell Boulevard if there isn't some accommodation to allow the queuing for a left turn to stall and sit in the road while northbound traffic moves on. That was the basis for the recommendation for me. We didn't get into the specifics with them and I also didn't have a conversation with the applicant about that prior to that recommendation.
Any further questions? I guess I would ask if we were to approve this with conditions, with the third condition being further conversation with, about, further conversation about the turn lane.
Yes, sir, we're happy to have further conversations with the city about the turn lane. We would just ask that it not be put as a condition that it's an absolute that we have to do it.
What would you suggest?
I think so for a zoning action, I mean, Andrea's making the correct point that moving on and moving forward with this is not developed for another year, two years, what have you. I mean, this condition will stand if it is approved by council with that condition on there, that any development of the site for community development, community recreation center would have to put in a turn lane, is what that means. I think to address her concern with the conversation is, I mean, I'm recommending that, I would recommend that it remain, but there'd be some additional stipulation that we explore the potential for maybe a development agreement to, I guess, share cost, the burden of the development. I mean, the development cost of the entrance itself, I mean, I'm not sure what the exact words would be, to be quite honest with you. We really, and I have to apologize to Andrea, we really hadn't had any detailed conversation about this because the reports were put out Friday and there hasn't been much conversation with the applicant since I haven't, I didn't reach out to her to let her know I was recommending that. That was not part of their request, but in my analysis last week, I realized that for safety's sake, that something at a minimum would be needed. I think the issue at hand is that a turn lane would ultimately be required, but it may be how it's addressed, how we handle it and how it's funded. So maybe you could include the condition in your recommendation, but stipulate that there be some conversation between now and council that we had to work this, that we worked this issue out in some capacity.
Right, and we would ask again that it not be a condition that we do it, just a condition that we coordinate with the city. Again, we're kind of going off of very little information, we don't know the cost, we don't know the dimensions. It's something that's kind of new being thrown at us and, you know, we're definitely open to talking about it with the city. And I think the city would have to decide on, you know, their funding participation versus ours. But again, we would ask that it not be put on as a condition as written, but we would be happy to agree to coordinate with the city prior to the next city council meeting.
Right, the city council has the final say-so in this.
If a traffic study is done and they do cite that turning lane as a requirement, are you prepared to do it then?
Well, it depends on, you know, what the cost is, how we can work things out with the city. When you do a planned development like this, you generally do a development agreement with the city after you get it rezoned. And so that development agreement usually addresses infrastructure, utilities. And that's the point at which you negotiate cost. So there is opportunity that we could potentially call share with the city if it's beneficial to the greater city as a whole. So, I mean, I can't answer yes until I know what it costs and what it looks like on paper. But in theory, you know, measures to help safety and traffic, you know, of course, you know, we're in favor of that. But everything comes with a cost and this is a nonprofit, you know, benefit to the city.
Any further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would have to ask at this time if there was anyone present to speak in opposition to this request. There are none, then we'll entertain a motion and.
I will motion to approve and I will attempt to do this in a way that we can all understand. I will motion to approve that we, that's approved with staff conditions one, two, and four, and three be amended to include the requirement of a turn lane with the cost to be negotiated between the YMCA and the city at a future time. But the, I believe the turn lane is required.
Absolutely, that's, is that suitable, is it what he said suitable to you? Thank you.
I'll second that long motion.
Okay. Everybody understand the motion?
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All oppose, motion unanimously passed, thank you very much. It's a, it's a great thing, what you're doing.
It's wonderful.
Need to work through the details, thank you very much.
Round the heavy.
Yes. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.